Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Adama.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat is absent. Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Suzanne Todd to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Next on the agenda, we have approval of agenda meeting minutes. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the Order of Business June 12th, 2018, regular meeting of Davenport Heights City Council as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Abella. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the minutes from the regular meeting of May 22nd, 2018, and the special meeting of May 29th, 2018, be approved.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and motion carried. Next on the agenda, we have public transfers and current claims.
You had your point of order. Go back to item five, public hearings.
Public hearings and comments on agenda items. I'm sorry, I for some reason had that marked off already by mistake.
If I may, Madam Chair, is there any problem with, should, those have been handled separately for A and B?
No, that's fine.
I should have asked that before.
Also, Madam Chair, just for formalities, on item number 13A, correction on the spelling, instead of barn to be bar.
Correct. Yep, if I got that. I also had, we are removing number seven, Director Hashem. Okay, because he wanted that removed from the agenda. He said that it's out of order, it shouldn't be until next meeting.
Well, we have to discuss it, though, there's some issues with that.
Right, right, no.
That's just the return of the bids. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, that happens after we do 9A, then we go, 7A is when they return the bids to the people who did not get it. So until he has signed contracts, he does not want to return the bids, so we're not going to vote on that.
So which one?
Madam Chair, we need to amend the approval of the agenda to remove 7A.
Correct, that's been requested by Director.
I guess when we get to that table.
Yeah, I think we.
Okay, we can do that. Table it.
Okay, no problem.
Let's actually do that.
Okay, public hearings and comment on agenda items. State your name, address, in two minutes, please.
Suzanne Todd, Academy Street. I am referring to Agenda Item 11A, which is an amendment to be added as Section 2-210 to Ordinance 18-04 concerning retirement plan appeals. I know that the council cannot answer questions during this part of the agenda, however, for the sake of transparency and resident knowledge, I would like to request that sometime before this amendment is read for the second time, thus making it binding, I would like to ask someone on the council to please explain in laypeople's terms what this amendment is all about, why it was needed, and does the reading of it for a second time make it a motion or an amendment that permanently changes the ordinance so that it cannot be interpreted in another way at a later date?
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council.
We can answer that, that was.
Councilman Coniston.
Without answering or discussing, which is what I'm doing.
Okay, well, I just.
It was something that the Pension Board originally, and the Treasury originally requested.
Okay. And what is it for? Just, it's just a.
Something they requested that we need, an appeal process, and then our city attorney weighed in. When we get to it, we'll explain.
Okay, that's all I ask, thanks.
Any other comments? State your name, address, and limit it to two minutes, please.
Address, okay. Good evening, my name is Jake, address is 1749 Townsend, Leonard, Michigan. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of HP Snap Investment. I wanted to speak today about an item that may or may not be on your agenda based on that previous conversation. We submitted a proposal in response to item 9A, the RFP that was released by the city for the 2018 City Action Preservation Program, specifically the rehabilitation and sale of tax-forcused properties. HP Snap has been in the tax foreclosure rehabilitation business for over seven years. We've completed over 400 rehabs and the subsequent sales for those properties. We have a team of over 25 employees, and we currently work with six other cities in Wayne County. We have in-house services to handle the entire scope of the project start to finish, and have successfully done so in the cities we work with. We rehab the homes top to bottom, adding granite, ceramic tile, new furnaces, water heaters, LED lights, and much more to ensure the sustainability for the future homeowner. We also host open houses for the neighbors of each property, and we get handwritten feedback from them, and they absolutely love the work that we do. We also offer to sponsor events in the communities we partner with that may not have the funding to do so, such as fireworks, blight removal, down payment support, or anything else the city lacks the funding for. The reason I'm here tonight is because it seems our proposal has no longer been considered due to a technicality in relation to the Appendix 3 of the RFP, specifically the acquisition, redevelopment, and resale application. The top of Appendix 3 mentions, "If the information does not fit in the space provided, please attach additional sheets to the application and to include the requested information on those sheets." I personally prepared the response and made sure to include the requested information in the proposal in the exact order it was asked, beginning on page four of the proposal. My request is that if we're going to be rejected, let it be based on the merit and not the fact that I typed my responses on the additional sheets instead of handwriting on the appendix due to the narrow response fields. So thank you for your time, and I hope that council will continue to allow us to at least compete for the project based on our experience and merit.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or concerns from the audience? Okay, well, next item on the agenda is number six, fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve current claims 6-1 through 650 with the exception of 6-7 and 6-8. Madam Chair.
Second.
Councilman Bazey seconded it. Is there any other question? Okay. Any other discussion or comments?
You mentioned 6-7, 6-8, has that been taken out?
So I will comment on 6-7, Madam Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 6-7, current claim, is lawn cutting service, and it says it's requested by ordinance department, but it should be DPW, and it does have Bill Zimmer, who is our DPW Director's authorized official, but this is public property easements and city-owned lots that are being cut by a contractor, and DPW through TPOAM has been filed, well, they filed a grievance.
Yes, they did.
Last year, and it was discussed and resolved by saying this would not happen, however, to my understanding, there was a grievance filed this year, May 2018, because again, this continues to be work done by a outside vendor, contractor, outsourcing, and that has not been approved by the union.
Yeah, because those are highway union guys that are supposed to cut that.
Yes.
We get a lot of complaints from residents who live adjacent to these properties. We were not able to keep these all current with the amount of manpower that we had. It was a very unusual season that it rained, and the grass grew very quickly at a short period of time, and we felt the responsible thing was to cut these lawns. I think you should allow the grievance procedure that the union has in your agreement to go along. I don't think, I think you're misstepping your place by taking the position of the union. There was a legitimate reason why we did this, and if you don't want us to cut them anymore, we'd be more than happy to give all the residents your phone numbers, and they can call you.
They do, anyway.
That's fine. I mean, because we're trying to protect the workers, too. It's their job, security. How many lawns, do we have a list of the lawns that they cut?
It's on the sheet.
No, I mean, our highway guys.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is close to $20,000 of work that was outsourced.
I see that.
It is when you have an outside contractor.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Did I hear you say so, 6, 6, and then 6-9?
I have 6-7 and 6-8, and Councilman Bazey will address 6-8?
Yeah, 6-8. I'd like to find out more why this company is, I mean, they're cutting residents' lawn, but why is the city paying for it? I thought the residents are being charged for it.
Is, okay, yeah, 6-8 is Director McIntyre's. So, that's ordinance, so that I think is okay.
We, under our ordinance, we give them a violation notice at their property, they have seven days to correct it. If they don't do it within the seven days, we schedule a contractor to go over there and cut it. We do pay them, and then we, subsequently, we bill a resident plus a $75 administration fee, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I have not seen, since I've been on the council, I have not seen where the money is actually coming to, which account is it coming to, or how is the residents paying back the city for the lawn?
Yeah, when we find them for these cuts, where's the money come back in? I know what you're saying now, yeah, because, you know, we're paying the company because we got to pay them right away, but then we bill the residents, and if they don't pay it, it goes on their taxes, right?
Correct.
And we get that back. Where does that money come back to us?
I don't know the exact number on it, but there's a line item for grass cutting that they get, that we get reimbursed from, that it goes into. And then if they don't pay it, it does go on the tax bill.
So we need to, I guess for accountability purpose, we need to make sure we stop outlining that. So if we pay this amount, we need to find out when it's actually paid. It has to be presented.
John here?
Well, I have not seen it, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll check with, I'll check with John Riley.
No, we're talking McIntyre.
I'm not sure what line is, but I'll check with John Riley, and I'll have an answer for you.
Okay, great.
It's under the revenue section. You guys get one to one.
It says revenues, but it doesn't say what revenues, it could be anything.
Okay, I'll check with John Riley.
So it has to be broken down into where the money's coming from.
Do we have Director Zimmer here?
No.
To answer to his portion?
No, he has some health problems.
Okay. Is there anybody representing his department here?
I can tell you that I, I've kind of, I've been overseeing artistic and the city cuts that they're doing. I review all the pictures for bill, and I sign off on those, that's why you'll see my signature on those. I can tell you that, from what I understand, they, overtime has been offered, and it's, and people are not coming in to cut the grass, and there's a lot of grass to cut. In fact, I thought that it was city property, but if you drive down Warren Avenue and Everett Trail right now, I really wish that we could get them to cut that whole section, but that actually belongs to Wayne County. They came through today.
I know exactly where that is, yeah.
They did the most horrendous job, it's ridiculous. In fact, there's a box sitting there, and instead of just getting out for one second and pitting the box up, they actually cut around a discarded box that, so now there's toughs of grass about this tall, but you could check with any of the folks, in fact, there's a woman that lives on Kaufman Street that will tell you that in the last two years, she hasn't seen the city cuts look as good as they have. They do an excellent job, and, and, you know, we hold them accountable, they have to, one of the reasons why it's a larger invoice, too, is it's for a larger period of time. It always happens this way at the beginning of the season, the bill is much larger because he's delayed getting us the bills, and then, of course, we only submit them twice a month, so.
Yeah, because I guess the issue here is, we have guys in the highway department to do that, why aren't they being required to do it instead of us paying $20,000 when they're paid to be there?
If they don't, if they don't come in for overtime, then there really is no other option, we can't.
Do you have a list of the people that do refuse the overtime?
That's up to administration, but.
Yeah, and that's, that's the kind of stuff that comes out in the grievance, and it will be our ammunition in the grievance. We offered it to your workers, they did not wish to take it, we're getting complaints from residents on the tall grass, we have to do something. So if your, if your workers want to come in and we're paying them a premium on it, so it's not straight time, we, the work is being offered to them first, which is according to the agreement, but we have to.
Yeah, I guess my, my, my position is, if that was the case, why did the union file a grievance? If their workers are refusing it, somebody must be saying they wanted to do it and weren't able to.
It's to the mayor's level, and they come out in arbitration all the time. There's many grievances that are frivolous, and they come out in the mayor's level, or they come out in arbitration, but that's on the mayor's level.
We just had one two weeks ago that wasn't accurate, so, and they're debated and given merit. I'm the first one. The job needs to be offered to them per the agreement, and that's what needs to be done. But when no one wants to sign up for it, that becomes a problem.
Yeah, and I will just say, you know, even, it's a common thing that people will say when they call my office, they'll say, "Why are, why are you asking me to cut my grass? Have you seen some of the city properties?" And we have to cut them, and if we don't cut them on a regular basis, they're going to get longer and longer, and then we're going to deal with rodents and all the other issues that come with tall grass, so. But I, I can find out that line item and get back with you on that.
We also had similar grievances two years ago when we tried to get other departments to cut the grass for the highway, so, so there's, there's history to that, people coming to council there's.
But I do have a lot of people that signed up for double time on the pet clinic day, so, that's dope, that's, but that's double time pay, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
On which one? Everything in six, or just the two?
On anything.
Okay.
On the agenda.
For six, I have a few questions.
Okay, go ahead.
On 6-4, 6-5, it's concrete, there's three different companies, I don't know why there's three different companies first. So if you go.
So who signed that one?
Yeah, so you got A-Land, you got, let's see.
Wait, wait. Who approved it?
Well, there's, there's actually, okay, this one, Mr. McIntyre is one.
Okay, that's Director McIntyre, 6-4. 6-5, it's Director McIntyre.
I can tell you, 6-3 is A-Land Construction. That's all the DPW work, that's catch basins, when they have water main breaks, they come behind DPW, and they do the sidewalk repair, including catch basins in the street. The other two that are undermined are the cement program that we had last year that we offered again this year. This is where folks were having a difficult time getting a contractor to come out and do maybe one or two slabs. Companies were telling them that they, the job was too small, or they were kind of gouging them in price, they were coming back with some outrageous amounts. During, especially during property inspections for certificate of occupancies, the building department would say, you know, hey, you've got one or two slabs that need to be done. So the mayor asked us last year if we could go out for bid, we wrote on Garden Cities, or if we could find a contractor, we found out that Garden City did a bid, selected A-Land, so we got your approval last year to do this program. It was real successful last year, we had a lot of people participate, and again this year, I think we've done already over 100 since, since the weather allowed us. So same thing happens with, similar to grass, except this is volunteer, they come in and they sign for it, we do pay him, and then we turn around and we, we bill the resident. If the resident doesn't pay, then, you know, it would also go on as a tax lien on their property. This is, each slab is $200, they volunteer to sign up for it, and plus the $75 permanent administration fee that's attached to it.
One of my concerns, the reason why I brought that up, is one of the companies, obviously, they, they charge permit to do the work, and I was told by one of the residents that when they came to check with the city, there was no permit pulled by the company. So we'd like to see if everything that was charged, obviously, the person, or the company's charging residents for permits to do the work.
Not pulling them.
But they're not pulling permits, so.
Well, the resident doesn't have to pull it, we've, each application that goes to the building department is a permit.
Yeah, no, I've had residents go to the building department and check to see if a permit was pulled to have their cement work done by A-Land, and there was no permit. And I know you have, too.
Yeah, I understand it was a blanket permit, but I.
It's a group blanket permit with A-Land.
Yeah.
Because if, to handle this, so there's one to handle all this.
What's the charge for the one permit?
Yeah, but why is a bunch of residents are paying for the, a permit to do one or two slabs?
Included in that is an administrative cost, there's costs involved in doing this, signing people up and tracking it and getting it scheduled and that, so, but I, you know, I, that's my.
Yeah, because I'd like to see them pull the actual permit in the future, let's say that resident goes to sell the house, and they say, "You replaced the cement, where's your permit?" Because you know, new cement looks different from old cement, and I know a lot of people have questioned.
Well, it's approved by the building department, they do inspect it, so.
But, but it's not on their actual record when you pull up their building department records, and so it looks as though they got somebody in there, replaced that sidewalk with no permit. I get what you're saying, but down the road, it could cause problems for them if they go to sell their house.
Okay, I can talk with the mayor about it after.
You know, at the same time, though, I tell you from my experience, they've had this type of thing, where they, they've done the blanket permit, and, and I, for one, I tell you, have never run across it where they've said there's no permit pulled when they've done it with the city, because it's, it's much, I mean, there could be a school of cases, but it's, it's rare. It's, it's much cheaper for the residents at the $200, and they do it on their own for $350 or $400, and that's why we did it, you know, about a year or so ago.
I think there might be a difference, too, if, if they ended up, some of them are replacing five and six slabs, which obviously would be a much higher cost with a higher permit cost, so we, we.
That's money we're losing, though, as a city, then, if we're just charging a reduced rate to have A-Land come in and blanket cover it all. You know, we charge those fees for a reason.
Well, we did it because we don't have a sidewalk program, and we want sidewalks to be for the liability. That's why we did it, to give the residents a break, to encourage them to replace the sidewalks.
So the administration, the administration fee, you call an administration fee, but technically, that's the permit fee, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I, I have received two phone calls from people, they actually checked, and, I mean, as council members, we need to hold these companies accountable.
Well, it's not the company, it's something we set up, excuse me, real quick, they, if, if they need, if they're going to get a temporary CVO because they need to close on a property, the application they fill out is their permit, and they take it over to the bill, just like if, if they had pulled a permit for a new furnace, and they needed to get a temporary CVO, they would show that permit. Well, it's the same thing, they're able to use that application that they filled out as their permit, and in some cases are able to go ahead and get a temporary CVO until the work is done, and then the regular CVO would be issued.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
And then the contractor pays for that blanket permit?
No, the resident pays for it.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Current claim, 615, I don't have a question with the billing, but I went to ask the administration a question, I've noticed there's, you know, labor concerns, information related to TPOM, and from my record, the last recommendation, the city council referred the contract back to the administration. Is there an update that you can provide to us regarding this coming before us, since it's been since the council originally approved it in December 2017?
Are we finished, though? Can I?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Was that 615?
615, yeah, this is, you know, the attorney's, you know.
Myself and the union and the mediator are meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
But, Madam Chair.
Councilman, Councilman Bazey.
Item 632.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, this is for legal service.
Mr. Miyaki?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have four dates that is actually charged, a full day in court. Just leave a little bit more info on that one.
Would you like to answer that?
Yeah, that's the standard way in which we've been doing billings for the city, as approved by city council motion since before I was even an assistant court counsel person for Adam Data.
So you're saying technically you weren't in court, that's just the way you bill it?
We always do full day and half day is the way it is always billed, so if we end up being there for four hours, it's a full day, if we did a morning docket and an afternoon docket, if we're there for eight or nine hours, it's billed at the same rate. So it's a fixed rate to give everyone a certain level of certainty.
Okay, however, okay, so you, there's a charge for an all-day, but there's also charges in the same day for other stuff, so why are we being charged the same day? There's a few other charges on the same day for an all-day court.
Because those services don't pertain to the docket.
It's not unusual for Mr. Miyaki because of court demands and stuff. I have most of my conversations with him between 5:00 and 8:00 o'clock, but it's not even uncommon to talk to him at 9:00, 10:00, and 11:00 at night, so, he doesn't only work eight hours. I don't know.
Yeah, that's fair, too.
Any other, okay, I've got a question on an agenda item, since we're going in order. Number 33, there's no problem with the billing for NAGL construction, but my main question is, I don't understand, since it says NAGL construction, we've got a bill in here from a company called Pipeline, who are they exactly? Are they subcontracted by NAGL? Or do we have a contract with them, too?
NAGL, I assume, is the corporate entity, and Pipeline is a subsidiary, is my guess. When you look at the vehicles, and I've gone out, they all say Pipeline, but the actual contract that I believe is with NAGL Construction.
So they subcontracted, they're a contract out with us to Pipeline?
No, I think it's a subsidiary. It's the same way that, for instance, look at it, there's Ford Motor Company, but you could buy a Lincoln, you could buy a Ford. Lincoln is a subsidiary, wholly owned subsidiary of Ford Motor Company, so even though you bought a Ford product, it's specifically with Lincoln, and I think this is what this.
Because I think usually they would put that disclaimer on here.
Well, they're on two sides of the state, so I don't know how they could be a subsidiary, two different, huge difference.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, I mean, usually you would put the disclaimer on there to make it easier to read the invoice.
Subsidiary, because Lincoln, it says subsidiary, I'll say part of Ford Motor Company also, I work for Ford.
Well, Lincoln, all the companies of Ford are easily, unless it changed since I left, Delaware Corporations. They, we did not have any, and, I mean, I, we get into corporate structure, but, you know, it would really be helpful if some of these questions could be asked of us, you get the packets on Thursday, I can't answer every question, and it's even on the account, we, we'd be more than willing to answer all your questions, but we're not always going to be prepared for every question.
Mayor, we've been asking that question, I've been asking that question for the last, since I've been on the council since January, or the first, no, I mean, just this company that we keep paying the sewer cleaning.
Yes, I agree.
And, you know, Pipeline's always been on here, and.
So, I guess, because, you know, Director Zimmer's been ill, who do we go to, then, if we can't ask him, who is going to represent him in his department with that knowledge?
He is here on a everyday basis because of some medical conditions, he could not be here tonight.
Okay.
We will find an answer out for you.
That would be perfect, because I have no problem with the bill, I just, I'm asking it as a new council member, I'm noticing this happening.
Yeah, I don't know.
Just want to educate myself on what it's about.
We'll get an answer for you in the morning.
Is there a conversation in the back, is there questions? Councilman Wenzel.
Just go back to 6-7 for a minute, the grass cutting. Mayor, I looked at some of these earlier, there's one, a $1,200 charge for a parcel of grass, and then a $1,600, I think the one runs along the creek, Powers and John Daly Inkster, that's a, I think that's county-owned, I believe, Jack, is that county-owned? It's on Powers and John Daly to Inkster Field south of the creek.
Why didn't somebody move this microphone?
My question is, there's that one there for 1,200, and then there's another bill for a property of 1,600.
I can tell you that there's some counties that we cut.
Yeah.
And there's some cities that the county cuts for us. There's been an agreement for a long time where we kind of swap, if we've already got multiple city properties connected to a county property, years ago, there were arrangements made between the county and the city where we cut some of theirs and they cut some of ours, so-
I know, this particular one is on the vacant side of the street, from the street to the creek.
Which page is that?
It's on 67, the third page.
But, I don't have the front sheet on it. What's the dollar amount on the invoice?
It's $1,200 for that one, and then, I think it's telegraph, two blocks of telegraph for $1,600. Now, if it's a county property, do we be, are we reimbursed by the county, or is it just something we trade off on, or?
We trade off on a lot of it.
It's a big, that theirs, you know, it's-
They cut a substantial amount for us, and then we do equally for them. It's been kind of going on for a long time. It's a swap that they do with each other.
Do you keep track of it to make sure it's even in the end?
I believe so. I know at one point, they were cutting a larger piece. We kind of took over part of that, and then in exchange, Bill had them pick up some extra properties that were along county line, so.
Okay, because the job there, you're saying artistic, that is a poor cutting job, that I went and looked at it today. It's, it looks like they just took a tractor. It's like a three-block. You get on a tractor, you could probably do it in less than a day.
Which section is it that you saw?
It's on Powers and John Daly to Inkster Road. You know, it's a grassy area, south side of Powers, but John Daly all the way to Inkster Roads. It's about 80 feet of grass all the way.
No, that's actually not a section that we cut until you get to, are you talking about between John Daly and Inkster, or between Beach and John Daly?
John Daly and Inkster, between John Daly and Inkster. It's on here, it's right on-
Part of that is owned by the properties that are behind it, you know, the commercial properties that are behind it.
The creek behind it.
So, I'd have to take a look at those specifically, so.
Because, yeah, I mean, that's, just those two alone, it's $2,800 for two cuts.
And part of that, I think, includes, is the incinerator property included in that?
It's close by there, but I don't know if it does have, that's on your side of the creek.
The incinerator property is a different, a different line.
Okay, I'll have to check it.
I mean, I'm all for if we get, you know, if it's fair swap, you know, cut for cut.
There, I'll tell you, it's, you know, and if Diane Webb was here, she could probably tell you, too. There's a tree that, I'm going to go move it myself. I'm, you know, it's ridiculous how long we've been waiting for them to get a tree that's literally-
Know where it is, yeah.
You know, I'll probably just get a couple of my-
It's in the creek, the tree's in the creek.
It just, so, if we, I think some of these were done because they just weren't getting done. If you look, if you drive down Beach Daly near Annaber Trail, they're just not going to cut it. I keep calling them. They say we're going to cut it three times a year. I keep telling them that's not enough. You know, now, the, can't think of his name, I apologize, the priest from St. Sabina's, who had just recently left, he organized a group of people and their lawmoors to go down there and start cutting county property, because they're just not cutting it, so.
Well, I mean, if we notify the county about blockage in the creek and they don't take any action, on what recourse do we have? I mean, because I've had several residents come up to me, and I say, I'll talk about it, I talked to Bill about it, and I talked to Diane. She's done her job. She's very diligent, you know, she does, Diane does a fantastic job, and, but she still can't get any results. I mean, do we go and clean it ourselves and backcharge the county, or how do we do that? Because it's a problem.
We're not allowed to go in the creek without permission.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Basie.
Yeah, because it's deemed a creek, it's under the jurisdiction of the county. Now, Friends of the Rouge would tell us, log jams and things like that, we're not supposed to touch, we're supposed to leave it. I disagree, but, again, Croissant and just a block south of, north of Van Born, there's all kinds of debris that's been there for years.
But the one you're talking about along Powers there, I'll go take a look at it tomorrow, because I'm, I looked at all these properties, I, you know, but I made sure-
There's people that live across the street from it that called me about, and they said they came by and cut it, but they didn't even come close to, you know, doing any kind of edging, kind of, you know, close to a tree.
If they didn't do it, then, and I missed it, I'll send them back, and there won't be, they won't be, you know, that's not acceptable.
And we do get a lot of calls about the creek and the blockage and things like that, and we were told for the course creek cleanup, not to take anything out of the creek, that, like trees or anything, shopping cart and tires, yeah, but anything, any wood, leave it in there.
Yeah, and what's interesting is when, when our residents call us, they really don't want to hear that it's the county's responsibility. They want, they said, "That's fine, but what are you going to do about it?" So, in many cases, we just kind of take care of some things if we can do it, but some things we just can't. So, but I will definitely follow, I'll drive by that one tomorrow myself.
On your behalf, I've talked to people, and they said that they have talked to you personally, and they have had action on certain issues, and I thank you for that.
Sure, all right.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
I think there might be an error on one of the pages on number 46-42, which is the claim voucher for the statewide security transport. They've got admit date of 3/16 and release date of April 1st, and they were only billed for one day. Am I reading this correctly, Chief?
That's provided by the court.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I mean, if the police department can answer it, but I think this would be a question directly.
Yeah, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, I just, there's an error somewhere there.
42, yeah.
Well, that's all right. No, it was, it's not, no question about how it's billed, it's just with stateside, statewide security transport. It had an admit date of March 6th of 2018 and a release date of April 1st, 2018, and they were only billed one day.
I figured it out. This is a billing from April 1st to April 30th, so, on the last billing in March, Jason would have been charged from 3/16 to 3/31, and then he was only there one day in April.
Gotcha, perfect. Okay, thank you. All right.
And when the Wayne County Jail's hall, which is most of the time, we ship the prisoners up north, one to Clinton, two to Clinton County, and one to Chiwashi County.
Okay. Any other discussion? So, at this point, are we leaving everything in? Is that what you're saying, or?
Or the motion on the floor.
Okay.
Not amending.
No, it's a, just vote.
He's for a second.
Okay.
You leave it as it is?
Yeah.
And vote? Call the vote.
Okay.
Can we reread the motion?
Go ahead, Lisa.
The motion was to approve current claims 6-1 through 6-50, with the exception of 6-7 and 6-8.
Okay.
Now, seconded by Councilman Basie.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, for the, all the claims are just for that motion?
For the motion.
Okay.
You want to vote on, that's your-
Okay.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is 9A.
Madam Chair.
Reports from city officials, CEDD Director Hashem, City Action Preservation Plan, also known as CAP.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Economic Development Director Joe Hashem on item 9A, which is the Wayne County Land Bank, they hold tax foreclosed properties in Dearborn Heights. The city is seeking to obtain right of first refusal for these properties. The community and Economic Development Department will coordinate the City Action Preservation Plan, otherwise known as CAP. As a result, they've sent out for some RFPs, and he is hereby requesting that the city council approve the following five contractors to be procured under the City Action Preservation Plan, CAP program. AC Property Management LLC, number one. Number two, not in that order. Dynamic Full Consulting LLC, number three, Dearborn Heights Acquisition and Development LLC. Number four, FPJ Investments LLC, and number five, Mackey, which is an entity to be formed later. In addition, the director hereby requests that the city council authorize the corporation council to prepare the contracts and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign a contract as itemized in item 9A.
Support?
Support by Councilman Conston. Yes, Councilman Basie.
I'm not comfortable in voting for this item. What I'd like to see myself, I want to know who the LLCs, there's one, two, three, four LLCs. It doesn't say who they are. That's one. The second one, I'd like to find out how many homes are actually, are included in this. Second, third question, I'd like to talk to each individual, whoever the contract is awarded, to any individual to be here to tell us exactly what they're going to do with the homes.
Maybe we need a study session.
Yeah, they need to come down on a study session and talk about each home that they're taking, and what their intentions are for these homes.
And I guess there's a question, too, now that we've heard from one of the investors that was not selected, HP Snap. There is something, we've got, I got questions on it, and I'm not comfortable.
I want to concur with what you just stated. I had several notes on this, and I'm not comfortable either putting my name to it, or any of our names as a council body, because we are not able to identify who makes up those LLCs, and the problem with that is there could be a conflict of interest we're not aware of, and I don't believe any of us would want to have association, affiliation with that, or on behalf of the city as well. The other question I have, and I have stated this from the beginning, though I support the program in rehab of homes and increasing homeownership in our community, especially new homeowners, I've already stated this many times from the very beginning, over a year ago I stated this, that this council needs to have a study session on this to bring forward those applicants. We have questions, we have questions that have been answered. How much experience do they have? A minimum of five years is probably a great idea, especially with foreclosed homes. So, I agree with you. I think going, and I know there's a motion on the table, that we either, you know, vote, or you amend, or whatever the case may be, but I would like to see it go to a study session as well.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
This is always a hot topic. I did receive an email from the Economic Development Director and did speak to him, and I think we've all gotten calls from different groups that will insist, that will tell us, one of them here tonight, that, no, you got to give these homes to us, and it's, there are a lot of companies that do it. I've been in court on convictions at the tail end, you know, companies will say that they'll buy them and put single-family, families in the homes and end up renting them out. I'm familiar with several of the companies, but they went through the process, and this is who the Economic Development Director recommended, and we did get a matrix as to who qualified and who didn't. The LLCs, you can look them up with the state of Michigan and find out who the officers are.
Not if they're not in Michigan. If they're in Delaware or Nevada, you can look up the LLC, but it will not tell you the person behind it.
I was going to say, I mean, I tried to find that information, Councilman Conston. The only one that showed up was the number four, the FPJ Investments, and they're at a gross point with two employees, and their revenue last year was $90,000.
And one of them was in the Detroit News as well, so.
Isn't that a good way?
You can research it. It's in the Detroit News for, I want, anyway, you guys can Google it, but-
Abuse is another word.
Yep.
Really?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I just want to get a clarification from the Director, Joe Hashem. With HP Snap Investments, on the matrix that you sent, it says that there was no, NO application that was submitted, but I'm getting a little bit of a different information from the gentleman that spoke earlier. So, can I get a clarification on that, because that seems to be conflicting viewpoints as to what happened?
I did send an email last week pretty much recommending some contractors, and I did offer my number and my cell number for anybody who had questions, or who wanted to look at these applications, to find out who's the owner and what this is all about. Those applications are in two places. One of them is at the comptroller's office with Linda, and I believe one of the city council members has, have asked for a copy, but they never picked it up. I also have a copy myself. I've been working on this for four or five months prior to the RFP went out. It did go out, it went on our website, it went up on the comptroller's website, so it was public information. When we opened these beds, councilwoman, the chair was available. We opened these beds, we had nine bidders. Out of the nine bidders, we had to pick five. The five that were picked were not just picked out of the blue. There was a matrix that's set up based on the RFP requirements, and I can pretty much answer one question about the gentleman who had a question about this. Page two on the RFP, item 1.2, it says that, quote, "Must follow the format outlined in this RFP package." That's very simple. Although he did type it up on Word, that doesn't mean he filled out the actual application. Although he followed the proper format, he did not fill out the actual application, because on page two, item 1.2 of the RFP says, "It must follow our format." Page two, item 1.5, "Changes of the quoting documents made by any other man, by any other matter will be binding, will not be binding by the city." That means if they change the way they submit this RFP, we are not bided to accept it. Page three, 1.12, this is based on the RFP, "Quotes to abide by all documents in the RFP. Acceptance of quotes," that's page four, 1.28. It says irregular RFP packages are not acceptable. These things were not done arbitrarily. These things were done over a four-month period between myself and Corporate Counselor Miyaki. We worked on it very hard. We provided to city council. We picked these names not because of who they are or what they are. We did the matrix. I sent the matrix to everybody. I did get a call from Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, and I did address some of your concerns. Now, the applications are about this bill. They have been available since April 29th in my office, at the comptroller's office. Anybody could have got those. I mean, all of you, you could have just asked for them. I know I've talked to the council chair. I've offered to discuss anything on those things, actual applications, to go line by line on any of those. The email that I sent was actually to discuss anything. Who's the owner? What is it about? Their all experience? Absolutely, that's on the matrix. Do they have enough money? That's also in the RFP. It's on page seven, "Level of Money Needed."
Councilman Abdullah.
We're not debating if the company has money or anything.
Well, it's in the RFP. I'm following the RFP.
We need, the council needs to know their intentions for these homes. What they're going to do with it.
It is on the application, Councilman Basie.
Well, I think we need the individuals to come here, either a study session or open session, whatever.
I thought that what the RFP is for, everything that you are asking for is on the RFP, their experience, their time of business, their level of, who are they going to contract, their subcontractors, their managers, their sub-managers, their accountants, their this. Everything is on the RFP. Mr. Miyaki did not type that, 40 or 90 pages, because it was just to throw out. I mean, everything that you are requesting or asking, what are they going to do with these houses? It's in the application. It was answered in the RFPs. That's why we put that out.
Councilman Wenzel?
Joe, so, all the owners for every company are listed on the applications?
It should be, yes, absolutely.
It should, or it is?
Should, or is.
It should be, absolutely. They have, somebody has to sign, and if it's a-
Just one person, or what happens if there's a group of owners?
There can be ten people, as long as one of them who is the managing member signs that particular documentation and personally guarantees it, and that's all in the RFP, then obviously they are eligible.
Council Chair.
So, it's not a secret. These applications have been with us since April 29th.
So, all interested parties and is the ownership of these are listed on the application?
Of course, absolutely. They have to, otherwise, we, Mr. Miyaki will help me out with this.
Yeah, Council Chair, just to let you know, I believe that there's a time issue. Now, not for me. Basically, in terms of the contracts, everything is included except for like the name and address of whoever we use. So, essentially, for me to do this, it's just a matter of me copying and pasting and being provided with the Mackey entity to be formed information. I think, however, there will be a potential difficulty, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hashem, but from the standpoint of him being able to get this administered correctly, because we are going to be receiving those names very, or the property addresses very soon if we have not already used them, and we only have a window of a certain amount of time to be able to actually decide to select those, and I don't recall exactly what the time period is.
Two, basically, we have to execute those things prior to July 1st. July 1st is when the list comes out, and obviously, these people will go on July 1st. They have a week or two to exercise their options, and that depends on Mr. Miyaki's schedule and line and whoever houses it.
Like I said, I will be able to get things, because the work I do on this is going to be very limited, because we did all of the contract in advance except for a few select fields, and I don't expect to negotiate with anyone.
Okay, clerk? Do we have room on the study session next Tuesday to put this on there? I'm trying to remember off the, I don't have my calendar in front of me, so I don't know how much time we've got.
I believe we have two things on there right now. We have the, Mr. Ian Crapp, the MSP.
Okay.
I believe we have two things on there right now, we have the, Mr. Ian Crapp, the MSP, and then there's a closed session.
Okay.
For the supervisors.
We fit it in to get it in our time, within the time restriction?
I asked for two items, which are not time-consuming items, before the agenda. The Woman's Ordinance Commission could be delayed, I guess, and the other one was the tabled motion at the last meeting, dealing with the, I think the drive-through.
DPW supervisors.
The one on the CX that the planning commission recommended. I don't know how long that would take, but, you know, these are important.
This is, this has got a time restriction though, so.
Madam Chair.
May I say something else?
Director Hashem, so if we don't exercise our option on these properties, then they go on the regular, they go back on the list?
If we don't exercise our options, the county will take them back like they did last year. Last year, we started late on this particular program, Wayne County ended up with all these properties, including whatever other cities that did not exercise their options, and eventually sold them in a lump sum.
Full closure, yeah.
And they want to rental properties. But I'd like to say again, these applications have been in our possessions for quite a while.
Can I interject one thing real quick?
Yes, sir.
If you might, one thing that I will tell you from my perspective that I have to deal with every day, which is really difficult and frustrating, is that all the homes that we didn't select last year, many of them were transferred by the Treasurer's Office to the Wayne County Land Bank.
Right.
The Wayne County Land Bank feels like they're, they actually told me that they are not obligated to cut grass.
I've talked to them as well.
We have about 35 properties right now that I'm struggling with trying to get cut, because they told me again and again and again, send us all the letters you want, send us the citation warnings, we're not, we are not obligated to cut the grass, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
It is imperative that we make sure we take care of this, and we are in control of this, and not the county. That's the last thing, I tell you guys, for my business, the last thing you want is for this thing to be, to have a right of first refusal by the county, and the county has it, and then they sell them, like you mentioned, the land banks, individuals. Definitely want it in our own personal control.
All right, since we got such a close time restriction, let's.
I have one more comment.
Study session next week, and then the next. Motion on the floor, Madam Chair, we would either vote on the motion, or whatever the maker decides to do.
I have no problem with taking it to a study session, all I'm saying though, is it's got to be done ASAP.
I would.
What is our timeframe on this?
It needs to be done by the end of June.
By the end of June?
So, and then our next meeting is like the last Tuesday, we can put it on.
But also, to be fair though, if you guys are looking to interview people, I don't know if you could coordinate five, six, seven, eight, nine, whatever it is, I mean, we've got five that we're going to pick from.
I think they'd be willing to do it.
Warn them all to be there, have this thing all done, a 20-minute session, half-hour session, I don't think so.
Madam Chair, there's always an option to have a different study session on a different night.
We could do that possibly, if we can't get them all scheduled for next Tuesday.
We've done this before, so I think you have a council body that is okay with that extra meeting day. Can't speak for everyone, but I imagine.
Well, let's try and see if we can get them next Tuesday for a study session, and if we can't, find a day that works for everybody, or, I mean.
I wish I would have known that two weeks ago, because then I wouldn't have put all the work into this, but it's your decision, so I will abide by it, whatever you feel you have to do. I thought I was doing the right thing, I could have sent this to the city council last week, and I did hold off on it, so everybody has enough time to review any type of applications, or ask any type of question, or go through the actual applications to find out who they are, what they are, what their qualifications are. Obviously, that did not happen, so we'll have to wait till you decide to make that decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to amend my motion to move this to a study session, for possibly, if available for this coming Tuesday.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Next on the agenda, under Reports from City Officials, we have Court Administrator Atkins, 20th District Court Cash Register Purchase.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we concur with our Court Administrator regarding the purchase of the cash registers, our cash register is outlined in 9B.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Congratulate Councilman Abdallah for following up on the, watching our pennies.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, on Reports.
Madam Chair, excuse me for interrupting, we have 7A on the agenda that has not been addressed, it has not been removed from the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was removed.
No, we didn't.
We removed it at the beginning.
No, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
It was not.
Okay, well, let's vote to remove 7A as per Director Hashem's wish.
We have to have a motion to table, so, because it's still remaining on the agenda.
We didn't formally do it.
No, because it wasn't removed from the agenda, so you're correct, yes. So, we need to go back, and I would make the motion.
Because she asked me to remove it before we started, and I agreed to remove it before we started.
I understand, but the motion of approving the agenda, that was not stated, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
So, we would go back, we should, again, have a motion.
All right, all right. We got consideration of bids, A, from CEDD, Director Hashem, return of bid bonds, city action preservation plan, and, to remove it?
I say we have to vote, we have to have a motion. To table, and then we need someone to second it.
I'll second it.
And then we need to vote, please.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay. Councilman Wenzel makes a motion to table it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bazzie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, let's continue on with Reports from City Officials. 9C, Fire Chief Brogan, Image Trend CAD Link.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I move to concur with Fire Chief David Brogan and approve the expenditure of $3,500, and this is per year, to come out of contractual services to Image Trend as outlined in 9C.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, Physio Control Wireless Connection.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we concur with David Brogan, the Fire Chief, requesting purchase of six Gateway Wireless Titan III devices for their cardiac monitors. These devices will provide a reliable connection from monitor, I'm sorry, from the monitor into our EMS software, reporting software. The cost is $879.75 per unit. We have six monitors now for a total price of, I'm sorry, we have, they need six monitors, for a total price of $5,278.50 to come out of capital outlay payable upon receipt as outlined in item 9D.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carried. Next, on Reports from City Officials, we have Parks and Recreation Director Gribl, Swapco Park Tennis Court Project Professional Service Agreement Approval Request.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we concur with our Recreation Director Ken Gribl and approve the Professional Services Agreement for the Swapco Park Tennis Court refurbishing project as outlined in 9E.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I believe our council wanted us to read the motion, the second paragraph, so just, is that correct?
Well, frankly, you could just say as.
Or as stated.
As stated.
As stated in the second paragraph. You want to amend that?
I move that we approve the Professional Services Agreement, short form, inclusive of the general provisions page and letter dated April 30th, 2018, as well as the addendum to the agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and Wade Trim and Associates regarding the Swapco Park Tennis Court Project, which includes the attached Appendix A, as submitted by Parks and Recreation Director Kenneth P. Gribl, further that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign both agreement and the addendum on behalf of the city.
Second.
Councilman Abdallah seconds it. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
So, they'll oversee the project, they'll oversee the actual Wade Trim will?
Under the specs and, yeah, some of their, specs and all.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, on Reports from City Officials, we have Police Chief Gavin Firearms Range Cleaning Request for Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Move to concur with Deputy Chief Daniel Vault Attorney.
I hope I said that correctly. All right, and approve the request for the cleaning of the firearms range, removal
of hazmat materials, and cleaning of all bullet trap and all parts of the shooting range. The cost of the project is $16,350 for the cleanup, removal of hazmat materials, and replacement of rubber mats, and payment is to Best Technology Systems as outlined in 9F.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Chief, where's the shooting range at? Is he still here?
We'll let the deputy.
Okay.
He's trying to.
Shooting range is in the basement of the police department.
Oh, really?
Yep. It's a nine-lane range, 30 feet long.
30 feet long?
Yep.
What kind of weapons do you test there? All of them?
It's classified.
We'll talk later.
Okay, thank you. I was curious, I never knew where it was at.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carried. Next, we have Public Service Administrator Zimmer, 2017 Water Main Program, Beach Daily from Haas Avenue to Ford Road, Certificate for Payment Number Five and Change Order Number One Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we concur with DPW Director William Zimmer for a change order, change order number one is a final reconciling, change order to adjust the pay items for work actual performed, resulting in a decrease of $72,743.95 to the contract value. The department is requesting approval of change order number one and certificate for payment number five in the amount of $56,230.95. Certificate for Payment Number Five includes the contract decrease reflected in change order number one as outlined in item 9G.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and motion carried. Next, we have Public Service Administrator Zimmer, 2017 Water Program in Arbor Trail from Telegraph Road to Burn Avenue, Certificate for Payment Number Three and Change Order Number One Approval.
Go for it, Lisa. Okay, I'll take it.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we concur with DPW Director Bill Zimmer for a change order number one is a final reconciling, reconciling change order to adjust the pay items for work actual performed, resulting in a decrease of $26,643.72, excuse me, to the contract value. The department is requesting approval of change order number one and certificate for payment number three in the amount of $22,133.25. Certificate for Payment Number Three includes the contract decrease reflected in change order number one as outlined in item 9H.
Second. Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and motion is carried. Next, under Ordinances and Resolutions, we have a second reading of Proposed General Government Pension Committee Retirement Plan Appeals Ordinance.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we concur with our Corporation Counsel Gary Miattke and have the proposed Pension Committee Retirement Plans Appeals Ordinance considered read for the second time as outlined in 11A.
What time for? I think it has been.
It's a second reading. We read it once, and there was a lot of discussion between yourself and the attorney for the pension board.
Madam Chair, second the motion, and of course, it is a second reading, so effective upon publication, that's Ordinance 1804, correct? Yes. It's 1804.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
The time to explain it. Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Because we had a resident had a question about this, I don't know if those questions have been answered for an explanation for why, I know Councilman Coniston had mentioned that, but to see if, Gary Miattke, if you might want to add to that, sir.
Sure. Basically, we have, did not have, an ordinance that specifically laid out what the appeal procedure would end up being with regard to people who go to the pension board, and this is specifically for general government, and so this ordinance provides that and provides certain procedural rules on how these are supposed to end up being handled, to make sure that it's clearly understood what everyone is supposed to do and has the timeframes for when they're supposed to do them, or do it.
Thank you.
Councilman Coniston.
Yeah, when I was Council Chair, John Riley wrote to me and said, you know, we've been waiting for some time, we need to put this on, this ordinance needs to be adopted. So, we put it on, and then there was some lengthy discussions, this is a very technical area, but it's just to have a procedure for basically an internal appeal, and it's nothing that affects any special early retirement or anything in particular. And it was originally requested by John Riley, our Treasurer.
Yeah, it wasn't, it's not, it doesn't pertain to benefit being provided whatsoever, it has to do with, if someone has an appeal or disagrees with the pension board, how is it that they go along making an appeal with regard to that particular decision? And the issue that the pension attorneys and I had a disagreement about had to do with whether or not the type of review in terms of RITS, which is a very technical area, but we had very strong opinions, and I made some changes, and they found them to be acceptable, so.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion is carried. Next on the agenda is new business, we have business license renewals for the Doghouse Bar and Grill located at 21350 Van Born. We also have LaScawa Private J VFW Post Number 7546 located at 6828 Waverly and Wall Street Pub at Patio at 25950 Ford Road.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I move to approve the business license renewals as included in 13A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman.
Most.
Council. Council. We're going to start with, wait, we have an intent. Turn around.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have comments from council members at the table.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bazzie.
Okay, so I have two items. One, there's been complaints about wires, DTE wires hanging too low on John Daly, I actually drove by there, some of the wires, they're in a tree line, so any kid that can climb these trees can actually touch these wire lines, and that's a safety hazard. Also, they have one, one area just south of Ford Road on John Daly, that has been spliced in two different areas, and the wire is hanging down by at least four or five feet. They can't reach it, but if somebody's on the tree, they can reach it, and I think it looks like they taped it with some wire or electrical tape, and I think that's a huge safety hazard for kids that are playing in the trees, or if there's any downed trees, the wire can, it can knock the wire down on John Daly, so I don't know, we do have ordinance for residents, but is there ordinance for DTE to put their wires higher? And also, they got telephone poles, a few telephone poles on John Daly, they look like they're, they're patching them with some metal or pipe, piping, it looks ridiculous. This is the first time I've ever seen anything like that, you know, I haven't seen it other than Dearborn Heights. It's embarrassing, that it's just like, it's a main thoroughfare that we have patched up telephone poles, or telephone poles leaning into the street with the risk of them falling on residents or cars, so I don't know who's looking into something like that, or have
I'll attempt to make a couple comments with DTE. I've been working with residents, as it relates to, DTE has changed, and there's like three or four blocks in North Dearborn Heights in our northwest corner. or four blocks in North Dearborn Heights in our northwest corner, in which they are on the Redford Township grid. So what has been happening, in fact, there's one resident in the audience who provided me some very detailed times when the power was out. And so you have situations that you only have these four blocks, and if you happen to live on the east side of the street, you have power. If you don't live on the west side, you don't have power. We have been attempting to get DTE's attention on that particular item. We've also been in contact with them because I was very disturbed earlier this year when it took so long to put the power back on in sections of Dearborn Heights, and it took a week, over a week, to put it on at Ford Road and Beach Daly. So I have filed a second complaint with them. I wish I could tell you that they are responding to these complaints, but I am not reaching much satisfaction. And I have had discussions, and I'll probably end up coming with a complaint to the State Public Service Commission as it relates to these items. I'm more than happy to include the low wires. I'll have someone go out and maybe take some photos of them, but I wish I could be more optimistic. They are a private corporation, and we have, the other thing that's been an adjutant of me, but I've not included in it, not only myself, but other communities, is that when wires come down, it's our fire department that provides free service to them to watch so people don't die. And do you think they'd give us even a buck for that? No. And I think it's, I do not believe DTE is living to their corporate responsibility, given the fact they're a monopoly in the state. And I will send you a copy once we assemble that entire complaint to the Public Service Commission, but they are not responding at all to Dearborn Heights at least, and, you know, I don't know what else to tell you.
Okay.
If any of you have suggestions and ideas, I'm open to.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Second item, this is for Recreation Department. Parkland Park, you got the Dearborn Heights Raiders, they play in that park, and they haven't had electricity since August. Why was the power shut down in the park? And it's, I hope you don't say it's DTE issue, because it's not.
Well, indirectly it is, but it's because they're connected to the new Comfort Station. And so until the new Comfort Station is completed, that's where the power comes from to their building.
So why, it's been, I mean, they've been working on it since August?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess I need to make a call and find out what's going on.
You know, we have the line there, we're waiting for DTE to come out and make final connections, and as soon as they do that, this project is almost concluded. We're just waiting for DTE to come out and make final connection. As I brought up at previous council meeting, we were going to use the existing line, and then they required us after the fact, because they are a monopoly and they can dictate to us, we had to replace the line. So that puts it even further behind. So as soon as we get that line and we get power to the new Comfort Station, then I can tie it into their building.
Okay.
So it should be hopefully before, you know, I would like this thing all done before July 1, because I have a rental out there of picnics.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wenzel?
For Director Gribel, while he's up there. I was approached by some, a group of residents from the Hanover area where the houses have been bought and demolished next to the creek, and I told them I'd talked to you about, and they asked me to mention at the meeting, there's, they said there's an issue with the playscape that's in Heather Lane Park, having access from Hanover to the playscape. I told them I'd mention it to you so you could maybe look into it. There's just grass, they have to take their strollers and stuff over a grass, bumpy area to get to the playscape. And I told them I'd mention that to you, and you maybe could.
They could just go down and take the sidewalk all the way around through the neighborhood, which really is only, you know, right around the block.
Yeah, it is around a block, yes.
But to put a sidewalk or whatnot in a play area where kids may play football, play other activities, whatnot, and now they land on that sidewalk, that can also cause an issue.
Is there a possible along the fence line to put something there or gravel?
Well, I mean, city council would have to approve it, I'd be more than happy. I think that'll be a very expensive undertaking, knowing that there is a sidewalk that just goes down Brookline, and then we have a sidewalk that brings you right over to that, to that area. I don't think it's that drastic to take them out of, you know, out of the way, but if that's something that city council would like me to look at. I want to be careful of, you know, putting a sidewalk right behind people's backyards. I mean, people may complain about that then, and then if we get it too close to the creek side, then we get, you know, they're too close to the creek, so.
Okay, well, I will look into that distance they have to walk, and I'll get back with you on that.
But I'm totally open to any suggestions you may have.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, because they can enter off of Powers or off of Brookside. I'm talking about someone coming down, so they can no longer come down. The sidewalk used to be in front of the homes down.
Yeah, yeah. There used to be something there, wasn't there before?
There's a path. There's a, there's a beaten path. There's never been a.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two comments as well. The first one is, is more for the public information as well as the administration. We've all been receiving quite a few calls from residents with concerns and complaints with our Trash Hauler Green for Life, GFL. So I had recommended we have a study session with them and bring in their operations manager. We could talk about the complaints, have an action plan developed to resolve the issues. And I, for the public information, do you, and I don't mean to put you in a spot, but possible date now, schedule-wise, just for information purposes?
At this point, we don't.
Okay. So let the residents know, we are aware of your concerns, and we'll be meeting with Green for Life to address those concerns. The second thing I have is, the city council relies on the expertise and recommendation of the administration. And of course, the administration is comprised of full-time staff, and they're dedicated at presenting accurate numbers and facts and information to us. My question is related to, May 29, the city council adopted the budget. We approved mileage rates, and then included the Act 345, which is for police and fire pensions. And we approved it at a little over $8.5 million. However, my question is, when you look at the Michigan Department of Treasury's website, they're recommending, what they're telling us is 2.5 million. So my question is, what formula was used to determine that mileage rate, the difference between what the Michigan Department of Treasury says and what we have and what we approved? And also, the second part of that question is, is Act 345 monies used for health care for general government employees?
Mr. Mayor?
I will have to look at the Treasury. I'm not sure what the inconsistency is, so we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we answer the second part of the question, possibly, about how that money is used for health care, in particular with general government employees?
You sent me an email.
Yes, I did.
That particular is a privileged and confidential legal opinion, and I got that from the attorney who wrote it. It was written before I became mayor, and I do not, I don't believe, it's not subject to FOIA, and I think the confidentiality, I have not had an opportunity to talk to our council. I have shown it to council members here, because I think we have a right to look at it, but I don't think this is the proper forum to pick that up, to mention that, to be honest with you, until he is, there's been a review of it, because it is a legal opinion that's never been made public.
Okay. My question is, if other council members have seen it, I have not, is there a way I may view it as a council member?
Yeah, it's on the appointment, I'll show it to you.
All right, thank you.
Any other?
I have one last. I'm gonna throw out a couple kudos really quick.
Councilman Wenzel?
Okay, I'm sorry, I had them in my notes, but once again, I want to thank County Commissioner Diane Webb for her fast action on some of the complaints that we had about the East Course Creek. The residents called in and said that the issues were taken care of. And also, I'd like to throw out some kudos to our Parks and Recreation Director Ken Gribel for a very entertaining, successful spirit festival. Everybody there had, was having a great time, and I myself had a great time there, and look forward to next year.
Councilman Coniston?
Yeah, I'll second what Councilman Wenzel said regarding the spirit festival, the Taste for the Heights, the Mayor's Walk, and some of the other things. It's a good showcase for our city. Regarding the homes off the county's tax foreclosure list, I would encourage the council and everyone to act on that quickly, because if you think the, our process is political or there are problems with it, once those properties get to the land bank, or if they get to the land bank, or go on the, under the public auction, there are vultures that really, I've had cases.
I agree, you don't want to go there.
Somebody bought a home in Detroit, this was the worst, it was inhabitable for like eighty-some thousand, and borrowed the money off the internet and had a mortgage and hired a property maintenance company to rent it, and the home was not habitable. So although it's, there are a lot of people that know how to work that system, and we can end up with some real problems.
Okay. Councilman Bassi?
So I have a question on last year's budget for, what is the protocol for last year? Obviously ended May 31st. Do we know if there's any surplus, what was left over?
It's until June 30th. We don't, we're in a fiscal year, June 30th, not.
So it gets reported out?
Yeah, you're, one of the things that I will forewarn you, and Linda, you're still here, under the State Budgetary Act, we have to go through and make sure that the accounts are in a positive state. And so consequently, she's going to be doing an all-encompassing journal entry. What happens is, a lot of the accounts are items that are not real material, and in a total departmental thing, they're fine. But you might have had, in a department, maybe a little more gas and oil usage for vehicles, maybe an extra 200 bucks. So you're going to see a lot of accounts, and you're going to see amounts. Have you prepared that yet?
Yeah, I.
Okay, I thought you said you were going to review it again, that's why I didn't put it.
I wanted to review it with you, but for, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why I didn't put it on the agenda, but you'll get that next month. And so then, when the audit report comes out, it'll be positive. So we're not, we'll not be making additional expenditures in that thing, but it's a rather to put them in a positive, because if you're in negatives, then you got to answer to the state treasury. All of us would have to. So that will be coming, and then at the end of the year, you'll get a, well, we'll get an audit report, and you'll get a final report. We can give you preliminary where we think we are very shortly after June, and then that'll give us, we'll be able to close the books in June. I've been, I'm constantly monitoring that on a regular basis, but I, there's some big numbers that come in in the month of June, and I'd like to make sure those come in the way they are before I express an opinion to you as to where I think we'll be numberwise.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I'm not sure if this is something for the mayor or for your end, but if you remember, I had made a motion to provide some raises to some department heads and then the executive assistant. Do we have any numbers on those already, or?
No, I didn't, I'm sorry. I will give them to you. I had it generalized, and then I was doing the budget amendment.
No problem.
I will write myself.
Please, thank you.
Any further discussion? At this time, we will open it up to public announcements for the community. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me a minute, I have Mr. Clerk here.
Just want to talk a little bit about elections. The absentee applications have gone out. We've been getting some phone calls, just to do some clarification. This is a dual application. It asks you whether you want both elections, the August or the November, so be careful to check those and to sign them. We have had to send back numerous applications that are not filled out completely, and we are unable to process. The other thing is, we're getting a lot of phone calls. People are getting other applications, okay? There's a postcard type of application coming out that is like that. That is coming out from the AARP. There's also applications being sent out by candidates that are in the race. And these are perfectly legal. People are getting upset, where are they getting my name and their address to me? They have my name on there. There's nothing wrong with those, okay? They're fine. Those are different groups reminding you to vote and sending you those things. So please, don't take that as there's something wrong. However, what I do want to caution you, if possible, we accept any kind of absentee application. They're on the website, they're on the state website. We send them out. The best one to use is ours that we send out. We have barcodes, it's easier for us to process. What's happening, our people are receiving the postcards, and they've already filled out ours, and they're filling that out again. We're getting numerous duplicate applications. The postcards you are getting are also only for the August election. So in order, if you want to save yourself having to reapply for an absentee ballot, use our applications. So any further questions? My staff and myself are always available at 791-3432. Feel free to call us at any time. I would like to continue on the items of elections. I have had a few poll workers come in, and they have resigned or said, I've had enough. And I have, those that have come in, and one came in today, I've thanked them personally on behalf of Dearborn Heights, the city, and the bottom of my heart, they have been longtime poll workers. They have been loyal for many years before I was even the clerk, and they have done a marvelous job, and it's, it's just getting too much. With that being said, we're short poll workers, folks. We have to hire 150 people for the election. We have sent out letters, we're not there, we're not going to be there with our, with the group that we have. We have a lot of people who are going on vacation in August, too. They're not leaving us, but they're just unavailable. With that being said, please help us. I will tell you something, I have been asking for poll workers for many years in all kind of different venues. We have put it in the newspaper, we have put it on the television, we have put it in the Dearborn Heights today. I talk about this before every election. I ask all of our people, I ask, we sent out, with our poll worker letters, we sent out extra applications, say if you know anybody, please refer them to us. The people that we are getting are not Dearborn Heights people. I'm going to be perfectly honest. The people that we are getting are being recruited by my staff, personal friends, acquaintances. Our pit crew are bringing in people. We're getting people from different cities that are coming in to work for us. We're not getting Dearborn Heights people. We need people. So we're looking for people with computer skills. We don't, we're not going to make your house payment, but we don't pay too bad. If you complete the computer class with us, and you take the class which deals with legal issues on the election, and you work the election day, you're probably going to get a check for around $170 to $180. So, you know, and also remember, you're helping us out. I think most people can say lately that our elections are run smooth, and there's no lines, and things at the polls, we're good. Our people are not experts, they work twice a year, and they do a great job, but we're understaffed, and thank goodness, we have the Crestwood Honor Society. I think this is about the fourth year that we've partnered up with them. We have a poll worker in the audience, and they'll testify to what a wonderful group they are and how much they help us, but they're students, and we need you adults. So please, please, council members, everybody gives me two people, everybody in the audience gives me two people, our problems are solved. So 791-3432, our applications are online. If you go to the Clerk's Department, the elections, we're looking for you, and we're waiting for your phone call. We'll have all four lines open tomorrow, so give us a call. Thanks so much, and please consider working our elections.
Okay. Now I'm asking for public comments or announcements.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. I just want to announce that our summer reading program kickoff programs are about to begin. Join us at our summer reading party kickoffs Friday, June 22nd at Carolyn Kennedy Library from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and Saturday, June 23rd at John F. Kennedy Jr. Library, also from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. We will have games, treats, and crafts to kick off the program, which is themed this year as Libraries Rock. Children, teens, and adults can all register and earn rewards, so come on out and participate in our summer literacy program. Also, the new carpet is in. Also, the new carpet is in. Want to thank you everyone for their patience while we remodeled the youth area, it was done two days ahead of schedule. So that's all for now, thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give you guys an update on Chuck. I took Chuck in last Friday for what I thought would be his final appointment, and it turns out it was the wrong day, it's this Friday, so hopefully, we'll get some good news. If you've been in City Hall recently, you'll hear Chuck barking quite a bit. He's up and moving, he's been allowed to be out of his cage in kind of a limited space area. We're walking him around from different departments, he's getting acclimated with lots of people, and he's doing a lot better with kids. We were a little concerned about whether or not he should go to a home that had small children, but he's, he's doing much better. I've had a couple residents call me and ask me, they can't make it to the, to these meetings, but they wanted, in fact, one was kind of sweet, she asked me, could I just ask people to leave people's spot in front of the house for their guests? And what she meant is that, she explained that her sister came and wasn't able to park in front of her house to come and visit her, and she was upset about that. So even though we know it's a public street, you know, I grew up, my, we had lots of drivers, in fact, when my kids were all at home, I had four drivers all at one time, I think we had five cars, and we somehow managed to get them all in the driveway. So I think it's reasonable what she's asking. And then another resident called and said, can I just remind folks about placement of cans, and that they should be on the easement and not in the street? So just to remind her about that. I did want to mention real quick, this comes up a lot, people will call and say, both DPW and Inordinance, that GFL didn't take some tires that I put out, they will not pick them up. They'll do it at a, at a charge. But there are some places that you can go that will also charge, but from what I understand it's not as expensive. Any Sears location will take them, if you have extra tires. Silver Linings in Wyandotte, Ariel Automotive in Farmington, and Sheldon Road Automotive in Canton. So if you have tires that you can't get rid of.
I took some to Discount Tire, too, there's a small charge, but that's on Beadham Warren.
Okay, perfect, that's right.
Tire, too.
Yep. And then, last but not least, you know, I've mentioned this before, July 8th is our Fourth Annual Low-Cost Pet Vaccination Clinic. These are for all our four-legged residents in the city. It's, we're hosting it, but obviously, it's operated by Michigan Humane Society. I haven't gotten any information from them indicating that the cost is going to be different than it was last year and the year before, so it's, I'm going to go with that price, $5 for vaccinations, $5 for rabies, $10 for microchips. And then for pets that are residents of Dearborn Heights, the clerk is going to have someone available that day to be open to, for those folks to get their license. So that's July 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The lines are going to be very long, but if you've been a part of it or participated, they move pretty quickly. And there's some clinicians there, too, so if you have some just basic health questions, they'll have some clinicians there that can answer your health-related questions of your, of your pets in your house, so thank you very much.
Is Chuck on the payroll yet?
Huh?
Is he on the payroll yet?
He should be, he should be. Thank you.
Any other announcements for the city?
Yes, Director Hashem, good evening, everyone. Just a quick comment about the F.R.I.R.O. refusal. I just want to say, it's imperative that you guys move very quickly on this one, I mean, the body, the city council body. I also recommend that you authorize somebody to call those nine contractors and let them know when they're supposed to show up and where. None of them might know.
I can do that, if you have the list, get it to me.
The list is with.
With their numbers?
Controller's office, they have a list, I have a list, we just need somebody to make these calls. That's my first recommendation. Second recommendation is to have the corporate counsel available at that particular meeting, because he's the one who wrote the, the actual RFP. And if I may say so, please read the RFP, the Request for Proposal, it's very important to read that, and that would lead you to the right decision. Everything that, once we put those out, people have to abide by those particular rules. No matter who you choose, it is your decision at the end of the day, but you have to read the RFP itself. It is available on the internet, it's available on our website, and it's available at the controller's website at Linda's office. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
If I may comment on that, too, one part of that RFP package is a form contract, and the expectation is that everyone, except for a few blanks, is going to live with that form contract. So if people, I know at least one company did not like the form contract, and it would require, I don't know what, to basically, I mean, we'd have to overhaul everything, and it would throw the whole RFP process into chaos if all of a sudden you ended up negotiating with everyone differently with regard to that.
Okay.
Okay, Nancy Breyer, Colgate Street, got a couple things. First of all, Eaton Center has a brand-new entrance, an awning-type covering that you should come and see. We have an open house on Thursday, June 14th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it looks really nice, and it was purchased by the work of the volunteers at Eaton Center. The city paid nothing for this. So we've had all kinds of fabric sales, book sales, and things of that nature to earn the money to buy this, and it looks really good. So come and visit us on Thursday, June 14th. And another thing, Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association, last month, our main speaker was the mayor, and I'd like to thank him for that time. He brought along, Bill Zimmer was there, we had Jack McIntyre, we had Dave Abdullah, and we had Ray Muscat. And they were all very helpful, and the audience had a lot of questions for them, and they were all answered very nicely. So I'd like to invite you to the next one, which is Wednesday, June 20th, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Thorn School in the old gymnasium. Our guest speaker for the evening is going to be Wayne County Commissioner Diane Webb. She's going to update us on the county happening, so if you have county questions, maybe ask Diane there. And then the July meeting is going to be on Wednesday, the 19th. Now, in addition to Diane Webb, we're going to have Corporal Hatton there as well. Carrie will be there to discuss what's happening with the police department and some projects they have going, where you can register your medical information and difficulties you may have, and it's then input, I believe, into the police system and the fire department. If you ever have need, they'll have all that stuff all ready to go. Save a lot of time and help a lot of people. And the last final thing, I'd like to add to the clerk's thing, I've worked ever since I was old enough to vote, and it's kind of a civic duty, and you do make a few duckets in the process. So I agree with him, get as many people as we can, and we do need our own residents to come and help out, because it's something that's important. I know I didn't work in Washington State when I lived there, because they don't pay you nothing. And they, in fact, couldn't get many people there, because they pay nothing, and they went to absentee ballots for the whole state. So just a couple comments. Thank you.
State your name, and there is a three-minute limit.
Good evening, to the chairwoman and all of the council members, and mayor, and other elected officials, I am Brenda Jones, and currently the president of the Detroit City Council. And I, along with my staff, just wanted to take the opportunity to come out and hear about the business of the city of Dearborn Heights, and hear, and just see how you handle your business in Dearborn Heights. We also had our formal meeting this morning at 10:00 a.m., and so I, along with my staff, just wanted to come out and see what was going on in Dearborn Heights.
Well, we thank you very much for taking the time to attend our meeting.
Thank you.
Chrissy Laszlo, I'm with the mayor's office. I came up here today to explain a couple things. When there are questions about specific addresses, invoices, line items, or other, other items that are brought before or brought by the council or the public, we do converse in the back, our department has due converse. We do this to make sure that the question's answered correctly. Sometimes, we even correct misinformation. And we do this not to insult anybody, but to make sure that the correct information is getting out to the public, such as pipeline is a part of NAGL, answers about the correct union processes and grievances and misinformation, or even something you just asked. Now, general government employees do not get subsidized at all by Act 345. Unfortunately, a lot of times when the mayor or department heads give an answer, we're disregarded, ignored, smirked at, or cut off. Like us or not, the mayor and his directors do our job. We know our areas of expertise and responsibility, and while we're not perfect, and not everyone is always going to like our answers that we give, we do do our job. We're dedicated, we have many years of experience and credibility. We do give value to our community. In closing, we are a team. I've been doing this for 14 years in the city of Dearborn Heights, and only as a team do we work for our residents and our community. The clerk, the treasurer, the mayor's office, department heads, and council, we need to work together, and only together can we keep the city vibrant, active, and safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name, address, and there's a three-minute limit.
Good evening, my name's Eileen Crozek, I live in Lincoln. I just wanted to take this, a couple minutes to personally thank Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. She came out today for our school, Party Elementary, had a staff versus kids' kickball game, and she came out and cheered us on, and it really meant a lot to us to see, you know, our council members, so we would like to see more, if, you know, if we can. But I just wanted to personally thank you on behalf of Party Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yeah, I wasn't, thank you, you didn't have to do that, by the way. I want to say, I'm always impressed by the volunteers, the parents, the staff, what we're seeing in our schools. I like to get out and support our schools, you're right, I do, and that includes all of our school districts. But it's amazing the work you do, and I know you did a lot of work, along with your parent volunteers, so I think it's great. I think our best asset in our community is by far our residents, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, and.
Move to adjourn.
We're going to move to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah.
I see.
Meeting's done.